Everybody's ready to go. This is June 17th, Gerwood Board of Supervisors Regular Meeting. The Board of Supervisors and its committees are subject to the Open Meetings Act. I'm going to call this meeting to order. My name is Jerry Fox. I'm co-chair and fire supervisor. The introductions on my left.
James Water, Roads and Utilities.
Mike Edgington, Land Use Supervisor.
Am I right?
Erin Boone, Fire Supervisor.
Christina Hendrickson, Parks and Recreation.
First up, we have disclosures. Anybody have any disclosures that they know they could also bring up during the meeting?
None for me, Chair.
Thank you.
I will disclose what I typically disclose. So in new business item 10, my spouse is an employee of the architects. That's how I would put it.
Okay, first agenda, we have the agenda approval. And I think we want to make amendments to this agenda. Mike?
Yes, I'd like to suggest that we add an item into old business, which is an update to the resolution we made last November about requesting bear resistant trash cans in Gerwood. There's an ordinance, a public hearing tomorrow at the Assembly. What I wanted to do is just update the language so it matches the language of that ordinance so we can, we'll have a resolution. We'll ask for something very specific and we'll have the ordinance hopefully go through tomorrow. So probably be item nine and a half.
Second.
Okay, all favor of making that change and approving the agenda as written other than that. Okay, next up, minutes approval. We have the May 20th regular meeting minutes. Do a second for people who would more wish.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 20th, 2019.
Second.
All favor. Okay, next up, announcement. Public is encouraged to ask questions and provide comments. Please raise your hand and wait to be acknowledged. Please take side conversations to the foyer. GBS Nonprofit Recreation Grant Cycle 2020 is open and closes June 21st at 3:00 p.m. Applications are online and at the post office, library, community room bulletin boards. The MOA GBS Quarterly Meeting is Monday, July 29th at 4:00 p.m. in Anchorage City Hall on the eighth floor in F Conference Room. GBS, the summer has its budget meetings. First budget meeting is Monday, July 8th at 5:30. Second budget meeting is Monday, July 29th at 2:30 in Anchorage City Hall. That'll be before the municipal meeting. The third budget meeting is Monday, August 12th at 5:30. And approval of the budget will happen at the regular meeting in August, the regular GBS meeting in August. The nonprofit grant presentations will take place on September 17th on a Tuesday here at 7:00 p.m. in the community room. And we will then.
Sorry, I have a request to possibly change one or two of them.
Okay, just the last one. We will vote on the specific grant allocations on September, October 2019 regular meeting.
Um, July 8th, I had a work trip come up. I'm here the whole next week after that. I don't know. We could switch it. Otherwise, I will miss two out of three.
We have GBOS the 15th because of the way July falls. We have Monday, so GBOS is on the 15th already.
Mm-hmm.
And so I am available that week.
Week of the 8th or week of the 15th?
The week of the 15th.
Room is open on the 16th.
Jack's Brad's got the beer going, telling me he's going company that night.
I will not be available on the 16th, not because of.
During the day?
Well, yes, it's kind of.
During the day are you available or not?
No, I have a.
I'm available the 17th and 18th as well, the Wednesday and the Thursday of that week.
I'm sorry, it's the 15th. But we can, can we schedule this later? Don't need to do that now.
To talk about it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it, we could do another doodle poll, I guess. I feel bad.
I'll send another poll out.
Okay.
For that one. What about, didn't you have another date that you were?
Yeah, the nonprofit grant presentations. I will be gone until the day after that. I would like to try to be there for this. I haven't made the last two updates. I listened to the recording, but any other time that week I'm available.
I'll pitch some dates.
Okay.
Thanks, Margaret.
Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. Introductions, presentations, and reports. Some committee reports, three minutes each. Start with Carolyn. I saw she's here with a Trails Committee report.
Hi, everyone. Carolyn Brodean, Chair of Trails. So yeah, our meeting this, in June was great. We had a work session instead of a sit in here and talk meeting. It was super productive as well. In fact, it was a very good case of many hands make quick work. Kyle lined out what he thought was an hour and a half of hard work for us, but there were so many volunteers showed up, we actually got the project done in about a little less than that. It was working on the damage that had been done by flooding to the Phase One of the Iditarod Trail down by full Gerwood. I recommend anybody who hasn't been down to check it out should go down there. The new bridge is almost completely finished and Andy's working way at Phase Two. I'll let Kyle give in more details about that and also update on the hand tram. The other thing I want to say is we're just starting to talk for our June 2nd, or July 2nd meeting, another work party in the evening, and we're now talking ribbon cutting on the bridge at 3:00 p.m. in the afternoon. More details about that will follow. The other thing we've been working on, Trails Committee formed a subcommittee to apply for a grant for signage on the Beaver Pond Trail, and I'll be talking about that later in the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Land use, I don't see Brian.
Hi, I'm Mary. I'm vice chair on the land use. I don't think I've presented here before. We had a very quiet land use meeting on Monday. There were only a couple people there and both of them were presenting, so all of the agenda items that night were also on the agenda tonight, so there's not much to report from Monday.
Thanks, Mike. Legislative Report. Jennifer Johnson, Kathy Easell, John Willton, Suzanne LaFrance, and I see Adam.
Hi, my name is Adam Lees. I'm Suzanne LaFrance's Assembly aide, and I got to spend all day here today hiking 9.5 miles around Winter Creek and drinking at the brewery, and I am very happy right now. More so than I normally am. Oh, come on, you guys are already in on it. And this is my last meeting. I will be moving to Virginia next month to pursue a call for three-year program in seminary. And it is very, very hard to leave Alaska, but in summer it's even worse. June 4th meeting of the Assembly was fairly quiet, but we do have some interesting things on the back burner and coming up at the meeting tomorrow, the 18th, starts at 5 o'clock. If you're sane, you will get there much later than that. The big one that I know is interesting for Gerwood is the Secure Trash Ordinance. Right now, it's at item 14M on the agenda, so that's the new business. It's the very last item on an agenda that already includes issues involving Merrill Field and onsite marijuana consumption, whereas a lot of worry that it will be, or it's very likely it could be knocked off just by the meeting running too late, being pushed to the next meeting in July. That being said, we do encourage folks to come out for it anyway, submit written comments if you can't, or if you're sane, don't want to fight the mini winnies all the way into Anchorage to give public testimony. Written testimonies allowed, just get it to the Clerk's Office or email all the Assembly. It does make it into the packet. I also boned up a little on the ordinance so I can answer some questions on logistics, or try to anyway. Next one up, the Tobacco 21 Ordinance. This is still working its way through the Health Policy Committee. They've been having a lot of very productive conversations with various civic groups on this. This ordinance would increase the age to legally smoke tobacco to 21 and also add in to our current tobacco code, e-cigarettes, e-cigars, pretty much any e-smoking product, which is filling a massive gap that exists at every level of government so far, hopefully being the first step to some other reforms on that one. Suzanne's one of the co-chairs of that committee, and this is definitely a project she's put a lot of energy into, so we definitely would encourage, especially on this one, any feedback, positive, negative, questions to help make this a really good ordinance. Tomorrow, this will get voted on because it got knocked off by another very long meeting on the 4th, but marijuana onsite consumption ordinance, both of them are coming up tomorrow. It's very up in the air. There's really no indication whether they'll be approved or not. Suzanne's a no vote on this one, and this one is mostly focusing on the fact that right now there's very little way to enforce driving while under the influence. She actually sat on a jury meet, she sat on a jury that had to decide one of these cases and learned very firsthand the limitations of what they have right now. The only way to really even get near testing for intoxication on THC is a blood draw. There's nothing like what we have for field sobriety test for alcohol, and it made the work for the jury, just in that case, very hard. So enforcement's a big issue there. The other is since Anchorage is really the first one to go, and this was a really limited one, we're dealing with a lot of different issues as far as our enforcement limitations. The state is stepping back on several measures already. We're already filling Highway Patrol, just as an example. So there's a sense that Anchorage may not just be up to actual proper enforcement of this, and you really don't want something that could be a good thing to go down in flames just because there's no way to police the bad actors in it. Obviously, though, feedback's still welcomed on that, and we definitely, you know, this will happen closer to the beginning of the meeting, so if this is an issue which you're passionate about, please do come. I think it's items 13A and B on the agenda, so they'll likely be handled between 6:00 and 7:00 o'clock, depending on what else happens before then. The next kind of big thing you'll see on there is there's a slew of ordinances and proposals on redistricting. Right now, the Assembly, the charter provides for 11 Assembly members and basically lets the Assembly within the bounds of state law decide how they apportion it. Several decades ago, they decided there would be five two-member districts and a single-member district that would rotate, except there was nothing to bind the rotation, so it's been stuck in downtown for the last several decades, which has left downtown with only one Assembly member. So once they roll off, the institutional memory is gone. There's no one they can rely on if they don't show up the entire areas without it. So right now, there's several that will be either postponed indefinitely or postponed for several months. One ordinance is being introduced. It would require a charter change, but it would create six two-member Assembly districts after the next census, which is next year. Once the numbers come back, the Assembly as well as the state both have to redistrict themselves to account for their populations. So obviously, there's a lot of time to deal with this, but if it's a charter change, it would go on to it. If you're interested in any of this, definitely, you know, email us, contact us in some way. We'll be happy to give you any kind of openness on this. I know this one is favored for several reasons, and the big one is it's fair. It gives every part of Anchorage equal representation on the Assembly per population. The other is a good thing is, you know, we have two Assembly members here in Gerwood and the rest of South Anchorage. They can really split workloads if they work together as a team. If one rolls off or one is voted out of office or for some reason turnover happens, you don't lose all of that knowledge of the recent issues and the connections, and it can really help the other Assembly member when they're onboarding kind of jump into it faster because there's basically you're drinking from a fire hose if you get elected to the Assembly. Those are the big ones I have. Be happy to take any questions or bring any concerns or comments back to Suzanne and John, since they do share everything.
On the representative, sorry, on the redistricting question, I think the public hearings have already happened for that.
There have been several that's already happened. There's a new one that was just, that will be introduced tomorrow, so the public hearing, I want to say the next Assembly meeting is July 2nd, but around 4th of July they move, so I don't know if it's the 9th. So essentially, they're going to postpone indefinitely, or the plan is, or at least postpone everything that they have, and that one will kind of be the main vehicle.
Okay, so it'll still be two-member districts. Because obviously, the other side of that is, you know, we're, there are far more people in South Anchorage than Gerwood, so we're 3% of the voting population or something, so we get the Assembly members of South Anchorage decide we're going to get, we have very little say practically because we're such a small number. Whereas if they were single-member districts, we would have more influence, still not very much, but we would have at least more influence. We're lucky, I think, in that our Assembly members, but that isn't always the case.
I would like to think you're very lucky right now.
We're very lucky.
Yeah, no, it's.
But that isn't always the case, and may not always be the case in future.
No, it's a distressing thing for small communities and larger districts. I mean, this happens down here for the Senate and the House districts as well. I mean, the weight's just.
But with the House, we have one, it's a much, it's a third the size of the Assembly district.
Yes.
So we have a lot more say in that and less so in the Senate, and even less so in the Assembly. The Assembly districts are bigger than the Senate district or House district.
We have three full House districts, more or less per Assembly district, for a two-member district anyway.
And then for anybody new in the audience as well as in the listening audience, can you say how to properly submit comments on the bear resistant containers to the Assembly?
I can. You can contact the Clerk's Office and I, oh man, I always forget the email assembly for that one. I think the all Assembly address is mmwas@muni.org. I have a feeling Margaret is also really good at this sort of thing, but I won't volunteer her.
Well, it's on the municipal website.
It's on the municipal website. You can also email, and if you email or contact the mayor about any of these things, definitely remember to include Suzanne or John or both, just because stuff that goes to one side does not necessarily go to the other, just because they assume it already does. You can also email John and Suzanne. It's suzanne.lafrance@anchorageak.gov or lafrances@muni.org. They both still work, and John's is wettletonj@muni.org or john.wettleton@anchorageak.gov to get your comments in. But the Clerk's Office is the one to go to, and if you ever have any questions about anything, the Clerk's Office is phenomenal.
Thank you very much.
I have a comment. Thanks for coming down. Always for the last horrible.
Thanks for giving me an excuse.
And thanks for keeping us informed on the Assembly and good luck in your future endeavors.
Thanks.
Safe travels.
Thanks.
Next on the agenda is Gerwood Area Plan Update. Eric Phillips and Dennis Crocker. I don't see either one of those. Do you have any updates, Mike?
Um.
I know there's a meeting coming up.
Yeah, there's a meeting coming up. The last meeting kind of closed out Phase One. We had secured funding from the Assembly to continue paying for professional help during Phase Two. We haven't exactly decided the work package for Phase Two. We'll sit down to discussion. We'll provide more information at the next meeting.
And looking right here, I wrote it down, I think, today. The next meeting is the 26th.
I think that's not right. It's going to be on the Thursday, which I think is the 27th. So there'll be an update coming to that email list, and it'll be at 6:00 in this room.
Okay. Thanks, Margaret. Is that it, Mike?
Yes.
Claire, you're up. Library report.
Hi, everyone. I'm Claire Agnew, the Garrish Library Manager. The Garrish Library was open for 171 hours and had 2,565 visitors for the month of May. It's still summer discovery time for kids and adults. Come and get your reading log and read and be active during the summer. Fill out your log, turn it in by July 31st. Adults, you can win a Kindle Fire. We have a winner per branch, so Gerwood people have a very good chance of winning. And kids have a variety of prizes, and they get a book when they finish their log, which is awesome. Our summer discovery programs for kids are Wednesdays at 3:30. This week, we have the magician, Don Russell. Next week, we have a really cool Alaskan animal coming. I've been told what it is. I'm very excited. And then July, we have another magician, author Steve Shrinkin will be here, and then another dance party by DJ Spencer Lee. So that's a lot of fun. As always, every Thursday at 12:00, we have baby time. Every Friday at 11:00, we have family story time. This Saturday at 2:00, we have a lecture, Introduction to Permaculture. It's taught by Saskia Esslinger. She's coming in from Homer to do this, and it's a really big deal apparently in this world. So if you want to learn more about permaculture gardening, this Saturday at 2:00, Saskia will be here. And then another exciting one is Friday, June 28th at 11:00, we're showing the premiere of Molly Denali. It's a new PBS Kids show that takes place in Alaska that features a native girl. Another cool thing is my brother-in-law sings the theme song. So we get to show it before it premieres, and I think we're the first library to show it. So Friday, June 28th at 11:00, I'm excited for it. As always, if you have proctoring questions, let me know. If you're taking classes online or in town, or you don't want to drive to take a test, come talk to me. And then, as always, facebook.com/APLGarrish for all of our events and news. All right, any questions? All right, thanks.
Thanks. Kyle, Management Report.
I'm Kyle Kelly, Gerwood Service Area Manager. Starting with Parks first, if you haven't noticed, but he's been out and about. David Parr is our seasonal employee, and he's out working for us four days a week, so you'll probably see him out here with one of the MOA trucks moving around town, doing different projects, so say hi if you see him out there. We have both of our SCA crew interns with us, so Student Conservation Association interns, and they're working on our trail crew. Currently, right now, they're working with Andy Henland down on the Lower Iditarod Trail, and each day they're making significant progress. I think they got another about 250 foot of trail in today, so that's coming along really well, and they jumped right in and helped us with the bridge that just was recently installed down there. So they'll be all over this summer. The next area that they're heading to is Beaver Pond that do brushing on the Beaver Pond Trail. And Emily Maxwell is moved in and keeping an eye on the campground and the park for us over there is our park coast by the pavilions. Our contracts, our weeds contract is underway. You'll see our local contact, this is Julie Johnson. She'll be out doing invasive weed removal through the summer, so say hi to her. And our turf contractor has already begun, and he mostly mows on Sunday mornings, keeping up with all our fields and facilities around here. We want to thank the 10-plus wonderful volunteers who came out and on June 1st implanted all the flowers through town. 700 flowers were planted thanks to those folks, and all those garden beds and planters in Town Square were a result of them. So thank you for taking their time, coming out and doing that for us. The baseball field is in full use. We have hung new signs, asked people not to have pets on the field. We just had too many problems with that, so we invite people to run their pets through the different trails and disc golf here if you'd like to, to get out and do that. And as always, we're keeping up with projects throughout all our facilities, and we just always remind people that like the skate park, the tennis courts, the playground, the soccer field, we try to keep those as people-only areas just for the sanitary reasons, as you can understand. Little Bears Playground, we are working through the assessment list on that, and those will be a project for us all summer long out there. We're keeping up with a little bit, Alliance Club Park, the tennis courts. We want to thank Gabrielle Hessel and the volunteers who came out and got the wind nets up for us out there. We have an ongoing discussion regarding pickleball court lines. We haven't come to any resolution on that, but we are getting input on what people would like to see there. And we plan to do a repair on the earthquake damage just as soon as we can get done with some other projects, so we hope to tackle that here in the coming week and fix those cracks from the earthquake. The new jump, the new box jump in the skate park is a huge hit. We want to thank John Gallup for his continued work out there and working with that. Blue and Gold held a skate event here on June 9th, which brought in additional donations for the park, so we thank them for coming down and hosting an event there for the community. As Carolyn mentioned, we had a great turnout for the June 4th Trails Committee project out there. They fortified the trail. We knocked it out faster than I thought it was going to be and went really well. And also along that trail, if you haven't been down there, a new bridge got installed over California Creek. It was a real success. We want to thank Paul Cruz for taking a huge lead on that. He got right after it. We want to thank Alpine Air for flying all the material in. We had nine sling loads. Two of them were 1,600-pound blue lambs, and my back never felt better after that all came in, so thank you to them. And Brian Burnett also for coming out and our SCA crew members for helping to lead that. We knocked out the bridge, built in three days, so it turned out really great. Andy Henland has been moving gravel back and well, bringing it in and driving out for about two weeks, and he's getting closer each day and he's feeling better about that. But the work they're doing on the Lower Iditarod Trail is really impressive, and we appreciate their diligence and efforts to get that done and right on schedule. We received a matching grant from the Anchorage Parks Foundation for $5,000 for the next Phase Two, which would be the section between Ruane Road and basically up to the cul-de-sac here for the next section of the Lower Iditarod Trail, and so we hope to tackle that next year as we go forward. And we want to say thank you to Christina Hendrickson for her efforts initiating and taking the steps to find funding for the Gerwood Trails Plan. That's something that we see as a priority going forward and getting that project off the ground and running, so it'll go nicely, go into the Gerwood Area Plan as that gets developed as well. And as always, the campground is open right now. We have a fee box and a station set up over there, but we do not host RVs. RVs can stay either up at Alyeska Resort or up at Crow Creek Mine, and we have signage over there directing them in those locations. The hand tram, unfortunately, on June 8th, we had a fatal accident out there associated with the hand tram. Since then, the hand tram has been shut down, and we are going through evaluation process and inspection. We just completed inspection with building maintenance on Monday. We just received that report this afternoon, so we're going through it, and we'll be making assessment of the next steps forward. So at this time, the hand tram does remain closed until we know more, and we hope to get it back open very soon, so we'll keep everybody advised as to where we go with that. GBOS nonprofit grants, the 2019 grants have all been issued. We have an opening right now for any of those who want to apply for the 2020 grant until June 21st at 3:00 p.m. If you need a grant application, you can either contact us, go to the website. They are also posted at the library, community center, and post office, and Margaret would be your primary contact for the GBOS grants, recreation grants for 2020. Other grants that we are processing, as I said, the California Creek Bridge is pretty much complete. We just have some hardware to install, but for the most part, we're going to ramp up that, wrap up that grant, and for the most part, that grant is going to pay for all the materials that went into that project, our volunteer time, and the donation we got from Alpine Air will help to offset those material costs. So that was a $17,000 grant, will be actually under $17,000 once we complete the project. The KMTA Spring Grant, we received a $4,900 matching grant for trail tools. We bought most of the tools, and actually, our new power wheelbarrow just showed up, and so we'll be able to wrap up that grant as well, and those tools have been in action as we speak. So, and the RTP Grant is funding right now the Lower Iditarod Trail, and we just submitted our first reimbursement with that, so that one is underway as well. So quite a few grants going on there, and we also have an Alaska Community Foundation grant for $890, which is helping to offset costs with those trail tools as well. As always, Margaret does a great job of keeping us updated with social media and website. All the information you can pretty much find there for all our committees and different work or things going on. And then we also have GBOS online, so if you like to watch our videos, you can go to, we have a YouTube site that shows all the GBOS meetings on there. It's riveting, so we've gotten a lot of likes, and so like us if you are there, because we're always looking for views. The cemetery, the Cemetery Committee is permission on hold now. They're trying to, they're working next with the Eagle River contingent in the Chugiak area to help with their process of developing a cemetery, so as they get that going forward, the Gerwood Cemetery project will be a bit dormant for the time being. Switching over to roads. Road status, our road maintenance crew is currently working on a, will have begun a list of large drainage and culvert improvements and road projects. Currently, they're right now on Cortina, dealing with a lot of drainage repairs there, and then they'll be bouncing down to Mount Hood and then over to. then they'll be bouncing down to Mount Hood and then over to Timberline Side and deal with projects on that side. So they'll be bouncing all over this summer. Since the last meeting, they have applied calcium for dust control, spring grading of roads, pothole pads, brushing, cleared hazardous trees and snags. They did the culvert replacements, they done asphalt repair, cracked ceiling and last night, street striping was completed, as you might have seen in Town Square. So that got done in the middle of the night. Major projects that we're working on right now, we are working on the Little Bears Glacier Hall replacement project over there for a new daycare facility. We have completed the feasibility design plan. We are working right now on renderings and still the goal is to put that in front of the voters for this coming April to do as a bond proposition to rebuild that community building into a new facility over there. So we are meeting with OMB, I am meeting with OMB to talk about that bond bonding and what that all requires here in the coming week, so we're still pushing forward on that project. The crosswalk pedestrian flasher system, we have two phases. One phase is starting the day after Forest Fair, which will be the install of all the wiring system, the driving piles for the light and signs and the cement foundations for the new push buttons. Those will happen the week right after Forest Fair and then as soon as the material, like the flashers itself and lights arrive from the Lower 48, those will go up and we, our goal is to have the whole system installed by the time school starts. It'll take about a week on each of those two phases to get it completed and should be operational after they're done, so. And then quickly with expenses, we have $198,000. We are, I've requested an audit of our undesignated fund balance, which would include the undesignated funds that came out from 2018 and so I'll probably have that for you at the next meeting. In April, we spent $47,000 with the road contractor. Our expenses so far for the full year is $228,000. Of the road budget, we've only spent 37% of the budget so far, so we're looking good there. And then our parks budget, we've only spent 13%, but that's because a lot of bills are all being processed right now. That's one of our busiest time of year for parks. And then police, we've expended 25%. We have a batch of bills that will be paid out here soon, so the, basically the second quarter will be paid out. And then fire, they've been paid out for two allotments, first and second quarter, and they spent 37% of their budget so far. So our budgets are well within where they need to be at this time, so. Questions?
Questions for Kyle.
And this might relate to James too. I saw a bunch of the invasive weed bird vetch along the bike path, not only along Aliaska Highway, but also down towards the school. I see in the notes from last time that Julie Johnson is our local invasive species collector, destroyer or something this year. I know that the DOT contract for Aliaska is separate this year as well as for Aliaska itself, they're doing separate contracts than the MOA stuff, but is there a way that we should note as a citizen who observed where the vetch is, like do we send a note to you or to Julie to communicate where we're finding it?
Why don't you just drop a note to us and then we can get it to Julie?
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, easy enough.
Because there's a lot of our talk between Monarch and Betty Sac.
Oh.
And the DOT right away?
Yep.
Yeah, I know that that's their primary area this year is they're really dealing with their DOT right away.
Okay.
Who deals with the other American trails for maintenance?
That is US Forest Service.
There's several downed trees on the trail, like straight block.
Yeah, yeah, we'll pass it along. I think they're aware of that. They do have a crew plan to go out there this year.
Further questions for Kyle?
I have a question. Obviously, if there's a tragic accident with the hand tram on June 8th, obviously it makes complete sense that it's closed. You mentioned that there might be a, that the inspection is being done. When is the next decision point for deciding whether, what to do with the hand tram?
Probably tomorrow. We received inspection today about noon and so Bill Falsy and Chris Shutey, Chris Shutey's the head of community development and Bill Falsy is the city manager, they're looking at it. They asked me for additional information, so I'm providing them with that and so. But yeah, I think we'll probably have a discussion tomorrow. Yep, there's still a lot of things that we're just trying to hammer out just to figure out where things are going to go, but nothing solid yet.
Further questions from the public, for House? Okay, next up, supervisor reports. First one is public safety, that's me. I missed the last public safety meeting, but I've read the minutes and Kyle stood in for me. The big thing is the contract and Kyle and I got together and called Todd Sherwood, he's out of the office until at least today.
I agree from him, so we'll talk about that, that agenda item.
Okay, that's on the agenda item, so that's kind of my big issue with public safety is just the contract that I'm working. I don't know if there's anything, well, I'll just let the chief talk, if you want to. Interim Public Safety Director.
Good evening, my name is Andre Shea, I'm with the Whittier Police Department. We're still trying to organize some more stats with the new records management system, just to give you a heads up. For the month of May, May 1st to May 31st, we had 54 calls for service in the Gerwood area. To date from June 1st to now, we have 37 calls for service in the Gerwood area. Where Whittier Police Department is currently investigating the tragic events that occurred on the 8th at the hand tram. We did send officer out with Gerwood Fire Rescue to the scene, so we are anticipating that report to be completed. Once we get preliminary results from the state medical examiner's office, we will be completing, closing out that investigation. There's no indications or any signs of foul play involved, it was just a tragic accident. Other than that, we're gearing up for the events for the Forest Fair. We put out a schedule for our personnel here, we'll have full coverage with a minimum of two officers on duty at any given time, up to three officers. We currently have roughly eight officers scheduled to work that 24-hour period to maintain the events and some of the traffic issues and congestion problems as well as parking issues. In the last month or so, we've been meeting with Kyle as well as Michelle Weston, the fire chief, here to address the primary issue and concern from the fire department's side, which is the parking areas for their egress and access to subdivisions, because there are a lot of times apparently whom I've been told, people park on both sides of the road, which makes it difficult for fire as well as ambulance EMS to respond to calls for service outside certain areas, including blocking hydrant access to the fire department. We're working on that. I know the Forest Fair Committee has been in contact with the state Alaska State Defense Force, which is, will agree, I guess, or potentially agree to assist in some traffic control. They've asked for a Whittier Police Department's insight on that. We have no issues with them assisting in traffic control, especially the parking issues. I believe they're going to come up with a, I guess monetary value to assess for that. If you guys, or the Gertwood Board Supervisors agree with that, I would suggest at least a minimum of two state defense force members that way and their primary job, my recommendation would be strictly for parking issues and congestion issues, not for any law enforcement specific issues. That's our job as police officers. Other than that, we'll support whatever efforts that the Forest Fair Committee has to make it more safer, not only for people at the campgrounds here, but throughout Gerwood just for the safe transportation of any EMS or fire equipment members now throughout Gerwood. On that, that's about it. Thank you.
So let's talk about this government defense force. When I heard about this and Mike came in and talked to Kyle and I one day, you know, what we said is kind of too late in the game for us to get involved. In other words, it's too late in the game for us to organize, be in charge of that force and how we would do that. And so what we had said to Mike was that if you, as the Whittier Police Department, would like to hire a couple of these guys and be in charge of them, we could talk about that, but we don't want to have any liability or supervision of that.
I got to talk to my boss on that. I'm not sure if that's going to be an issue or not. If they were volunteers, that wouldn't be an issue because we'll supervise them. You know, certain things my boss will probably ask, just like if you guys would hire someone who assumes liability, you know, insurance aspects, all that. So that's something we'll probably have to talk to Colonel Simon Brown, the State Defense Force, and ask them if we would hire them if they'd be a contractor versus an employee for us. So that's something I could talk to my boss and I got to double check. I know one of my bosses are not in town, I'll check with my other boss and Whittier's in town and we can discuss it with him.
Does anybody else on the board have a comment on this idea?
I agree that it needs to be subcontracted so that there's a chain of command in the line to ensure that their scope of work of particularly focusing on parking and not getting involved in any other law enforcement activity during such a busy weekend is followed through and recognized by the IC that's going to be set up for the weekend.
And I agree, no matter what, we would probably, if they were hired, the Whittier Police Department would probably, they're oversight, direct oversight any of the officers there and would direct them to non-criminal activities, more parking and enforcement aspects. So I'll talk to my city manager on the other side of the tunnel and ask for his suggestions and recommendations and then I'll come back to Kyle and let him know.
And just for the board, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but the understanding was it would be $200 a day per person?
Yes, per individual.
For individual?
Close to $135, $132 a day, eighty per hour.
Yeah.
The concept is that they are tracking many, they could use uniforms, they would supplement manpower-wise to Whittier and they were working through record control for the Whittier Police Department. The reason this brought up to you folks is a supplemental appropriation from the board to, on the budget for Whittier, this comes to pass and Forest Fair was originally going to do this with several of their members, but they subsequently have decided not to because of money, only money, not bring on the State Defense Force because of so many other things changed, taking that money away out of the Forest Fair.
So similarly to having hosted Tommy last month, or was it last month or two months ago, and talking about supplemental funds in order to pay for additional manpower to oversee Forest Fair, we're going to have that conversation again?
So Mike, are we talking about $800?
It would depend on how many people.
You said two, two for three days, basically?
Yes.
Maybe four, depending on the course of the rains, nothing's going to happen, but if it's a decent day like it was last year, they don't have staffing to handle the cars. And it would strictly be under the direction of the Whittier Police Department and not under the direction of Forest Fair.
And this would be appropriation that they would allocate funds for at a later date that we would?
No, the way it would, it would have to work is we would have to have a special meeting to approve it, because it's coming up so quick, but we would have to have a special meeting to approve, because, that's my understanding, right Kyle? So we'd have to have a special meeting before the Forest Fair to approve this if that was going to happen.
Yeah, especially if the subcontract were to have any provisions such as if it weren't rains and we dismissed two of the four, do we have a day rate contingent that we'd have to pay for any mobilization or demobilization of that particular entity as it relates to you guys? So that could be, 800 is the rough number, but there could be an extra within the confines of that contract to think of.
To me, it's a small amount, but to help with the parking that day, but.
The original concept is like the police department, about 6,500. In total, this would be maybe 1,500 max and if it rains, it's still the contract, we'd still have to pay.
Yeah, I understand it's negligible considering the larger amount, but if there's already no money in the budget for 800, 1,500, 6,500, there's no money in the budget, so we're going to have to figure out where it's coming from.
Yeah, we could, we could find the money, but we just have to, we'd have to have a meeting to approve it and the board would have to agree that we were going to help subsidize this event and, you know, one of the issues that came up in the last meeting was just, well then what's going to happen when Slushka comes around? Then is the sort going to say, we want you to pay for it to help parking and I'm not...
Particularly because the scope of this work would be parking not within the confines of the permitted area for the Forest Fair. This would be on the streets near the fire hydrants and everything that James had the idea of in the last meeting to just put out additional ballards in front of them in order to offset, keep people from parking in front of them.
Could we table this to see a contract or see?
Oh yes.
Yeah, presentation and then make a special?
So, let's do this, because we don't even know what's going to happen, so let's just, we're going to table it and there may be an emergency, you know, we'll have an extra meeting, special meeting.
And I know one of the concerns that was brought up in is the military, because they're going to be in military uniforms. My goal is having low-key, just vests, it says traffic, don't want any of the, you know, military policing aspects of it. They're strictly traffic controlled, just assist and be nice. So that's what we're trying to portray and that's, either way, if we, if the board agrees with it, we will still supervise them. If they don't, we'll see if there's any other option, but we'll still make a concerted effort to have my guys out there if they can do it. But I would strongly urge you to consider having someone else specifically set up for that.
Yeah, daughter vigil sergeant, I don't see my dad nicely enforcing parking for Forest Fair.
Yeah, so, so that's one thing, I want to make sure that's, that was our goal, bringing the defense force out.
Okay, so then we'll just.
They are not military.
Yeah.
Will they be armed?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, any other questions? And we'll just table that one until later date if it even happens for the police chief and other topics other than Forest Fair, government.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, do you have any, anything else to report?
I've pretty much done it all.
Anybody else have any questions for public safety? Hearing none, we'll go on. Roads and utilities, James?
I think Kyle covered everything. We approved the invoices and it seemed to be on the board. I think that was it, he covered most everything.
Well, I have one comment. Hey Chief? I have one comment and I wanted to say before you left. I've heard from everybody that your force was very professional in the tragic accident and I want to say thank you. And everybody that was there and, there were a lot of people there, said the Whittier Police Department handled it very well, the Gerwood Fire and Rescue handled it very well and the volunteers that were there were very helpful. So it was a tragic deal and just thanks.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, next up, Parks and Rec, Christina?
No further comment.
Next up, Fire Department, Erin?
We've had a couple of fire meetings the last week. Last week, Jerry and I attended the fire board meeting and then just before this, we had our semi-annual GBOS fire meeting. We covered about the same thing, so I'll just go through them quickly because Michelle's not here. We talked about AFD contract negotiations. The current contract with AFD was written in 2000, so it's out of date, needs to be updated. We're going to start working on that in September to accommodate schedules, summer schedules. Then we also talked about Kenai Peninsula funding. When we, when the Gerwood Fire Department goes out and responds to incidents on Kenai Peninsula, we're currently not getting reimbursed and so Michelle is working with Kenai Peninsula Borough to work that out so we can get reimbursed for that. We talked about the budget, which so far looks to be on track for this year. Talked about the Gerwood Fire and Rescue bylaws, which the board is currently working on revising to bring them up to a point where they better serve the board and the department and so they can get signed, so they're a legal document. Let's see, oh, Michelle also mentioned the woodlot will be open this weekend, June 22nd and July 20th. It's $15 a truckload and $20, $20 a trailer load and the reason they're charging this year is because there's no funding through the Muni this year, so they're hoping to recoup some of the cost for having someone out there. Let's see, we talked about some equipment replacement they'll need this year, SCBA's... this year, SCBA's, an air compressor, and turnouts, and they're still working on the best place to find funding for those. And, let's see, they're also getting two e-bikes for emergency response. The resort reduced, offered them at a reduced rate, and then the Car Foundation donated half the money they need, and then the public donated about $475 towards the second one. So those will be good for trail-related incidents that they respond to. And I think that was about it. Anything else?
No.
How about a...
Okay, next up, unless there's any questions about, for the Fire Department. Next up is land use. Mike?
I think the only general land use comment I have is the, I'm going to say that the last assembly meeting, maybe before, the trapping ordinance was passed. So we now have a set of, we now have, we play a set of rules around banning of trapping within a certain distance of all trails, trailheads, et cetera. There's, it's kind of a, trapping's a weird thing. There's very little real rules and regulations, but there is a code of ethics. So under the code of ethics, things are exactly the same. There's still areas where the trapping code of ethics wouldn't suggest you put traps, but obviously we know they do appear. So now there's some enforcement power within the municipality, within the municipality overland. Moving on to the chapter, chapter nine, or Title 21, Chapter 9, parking requirements. Both this and the, and the ADU for housing, for the accessory dwelling unit rules, these are both about to be submitted formally to the planning department. In the case of parking, we've just done one presentation within our local process. It'll go into, like, as if it was a variance request or something else, it will go into the planning department. They'll do a staff packet, they'll be hearing scheduled for P and Z. At that point, we'll come back to the local process, have a meeting, discuss the, discuss the staff packet and everything, go through. With the housing, we did it a slightly different way. We actually approved everything locally, and then it goes through the P and Z process. So in both cases, there are plenty more opportunities, public hearings and discussion over P and Z and at the assembly. The other thing is on the Housing Working Group, we're looking at a couple of other issues. We reviewed the municipality's plan for housing and how they're spending HUD money. We're going to make more, provide more input for the next cycle, for the next year of grant funding. And we also started discussing sort of the general landscape around short-term rentals and whether we should put them somewhere on the par with B and Bs. Currently, for bed and breakfast, you need a permit, you need a fire inspection if you do short-term rentals. There's none of that at all, you're just, you're just doing. You're supposed to have a business license, but it's unclear what our actual compliance rate is and that's it. So we're gathering some data and looking at the, looking at the problems and looking at how other communities have solved the issues around short-term rental. Any questions?
For the trapping, was that just on state-maintained trails or municipal?
No, this is done purely, this is the municipal trail. So it basically covers, it covers HOB land and other municipality overland, which includes our own land, so anything which goes to the Parks and Rec, that's also under the same thing. John can tell us all the details.
Actually, if any lands within the municipal, so it's not a state park, it's not a city.
Oh, really? Well, I didn't remember.
Great, thanks for the clarification.
It's interesting, should we see if there's...
Yeah.
What do I have to say?
I missed his report.
I covered...
I covered security trash, Title 21.
We have on our agenda tonight, we're going to talk about the bear ordinance trash.
That's later.
Yeah, that's a meeting.
I think Toby sent it there.
Sure.
Hi, Radio Land, John Weddleton here. So I think, did you talk about the secure loads? Secure loads?
No.
No, okay. So we have an ordinance, you've got to cover up your loads so nothing falls off. And the fines now, $150, and if you don't have a secure load now, it goes up to 500, then 1,500, then like 5,000. So it's quite serious, you know, but we've had trouble. I mean, I think it was last year or the year before, a big rock fell off a truck and killed a kid, Kenai Peninsula, and we have trouble in the city. We have people testifying who have gotten wrecks and brain damage and so on because of, you know, uncovered loads. And boy, you sure see it, you know, people just lose stuff in the back of their pickup truck, it's just bouncing around. So, so that's going to, about to get a lot more serious. And then just one thing I want to comment, we have a number of things for Girdwood in our packet for tomorrow. One is some changes in the Title IX that are just, I think, about mineral extraction in certain areas, that I think are just, recognize that was already existing and it just didn't get in there. We sped up the Silver Tip liquor license transfer so that they should have it ready in time for Girdwood Forest Fair. But a couple of things, I think we got a letter on that, but it came late. I don't think you did it late, but it's really helpful for anything Girdwood to see what GBOS has. And I saw some things on the back table, too. So I don't know where...
Yeah, it's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay.
And also the mineral extractions on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. Yeah, so that's good, but we really do look for, if it's a Girdwood thing, what does GBOS say? So we want to make sure we get those in. And I, it seems like you have them dialed in pretty well, but, so I don't know if we're missing it at the planning staff level, it's not getting in our packet, or, or something. But it's important to have that, because you guys do good work and we count on your viewpoint on those things. That's the highlights. Any questions?
Any questions for Assemblyman? Thanks, John. Public comment. First is offering public comment of a state their full name and address. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person, must be on subject and not listed on the agenda. Julie?
Good evening. Julie Raymond, Yocobian Box 924. I just wanted to remind everybody about the Muni's Historic Preservation Commission, and that we exist. And I am a commissioner. There is no specific Girdwood seat on the commission, but I live here in Girdwood. And Girdwood Historic Preservation and Cultural Resources are one of my main concerns. So just wanted to let everyone know that our next meeting is going to be June 27th at 5:30 PM. And we meet at the Municipal Planning Department on Elmore. And there is a call-in number if you're not able to attend in person. And that number's 343-6067. And the public is encouraged and welcome to attend. And, yeah, I just also wanted to read our purpose, for those of you out there that may not be familiar. The Historic Preservation Commission encourages and furthers the interests of historic preservation by identifying, protecting, and interpreting the municipality's significant historic and cultural resources for the economic and social benefit of the community. So if anyone has interest or concerns about buildings, structures, historic sites, archaeological sites, trails, objects within the municipality, feel free to get in touch with me. I'd be happy to talk with you about that. Best way to get ahold of me right now is probably through Kyle or Margaret or the Planning Department at the Muni. And what else? Oh, we will be holding one of our upcoming meetings here in Girdwood, probably in August, but that's not for sure yet. So we'll announce that when we know it for sure and encourage people to come to the Girdwood meeting if they can for sure. Thanks.
Questions?
Yeah.
Is that, are they held up?
Yes. The meetings are the fourth Thursday of every month at 5:30 PM, except for, we have no July meeting.
Thanks. Okay, old business. First up is review of progress of negotiation with the Whittier Police Department contract, Police Services. This is going to be on the agenda for a while now. We're just going to keep it there to keep reminding me to keep working on it with Kyle. So Kyle, you said you talked, you made contact with Kyle today?
Yep. Todd was just going to clarify with his supervisor to make sure he would be the point person to handle this. Otherwise, DNR handles a lot of contracts, and so we may work with DNR, but Todd's been involved in the past, so I bet you that he gets the sign.
So, we're working on it. And that's kind of my update. I read the whole contract and all the revisions by the Public Safety Committee today. Any questions about police contract? Hearing none. Next, agenda item, LUC 190504, second presentation and action based on LUC recommendation of GBOS letter of non-objection for change to Title 21, Chapter 9, relating to material extraction from existing claim in areas of Girdwood Open Spaces and Girdwood Development Reserve. Michelle McNulty, Dave Whitfield. So who's going to talk on this?
I guess I can.
And look at you and Mike.
It's one of our roles, yeah. Who are you? I can do it. Okay. I'll just criticize for the conference. Mike can fill in. So there is a Assembly Amendment, or AO, Assembly Ordinance of tomorrow night for the discussion on, so what happened was is that it was discovered through the permitting process that DOT and its contractor in particular granted wanted to activate old claims and mining resources along turning an arm. When they went to go file their applications with DNR and then also with the Muni, it was discovered within Muni code that these weren't allowable uses within the Girdwood Open Space designation. And so what Planning Department is trying to do is change the main code to allow those uses within it because of the fact that those mining claims or those mineral extraction resource claims existed before the code was written. And also, they're trying to basically avoid a lawsuit that they feel they're going to lose because those claims trump what was here, the way it was claimed by, by planning. So in front of you is the AO, and it sort describes the changes that are going on there in these federal patents and state patents and federal mining claims, and how it works within those areas. There's also a map within the packet, the stat, the meeting packet, that shows what these claims are. If you're aware, one of the claims that they have in here is the one that's at the end of a wagon wheel trail at the base of Orca, coming from Bridget Creek, going that direction. When you hike out there to the end, you end up there, and it's, it's basically a old gobble pit, and that's owned by DOT. And then I believe most of them are state-owned, either between DOT and Alaska Railroad. So that's my synopsis. I don't, I'm just representing what I've heard at three meetings, just to present it.
Mike, do you have any further to follow?
Well, I mean, it's...
Clarifications?
So the two things I'd say is this is, this kind of represents a drafting error, which is being fixed. When the code was put together, there was a, there should have been a full analysis of all existing mineral claims, and I think it was only partially done, so this is filling in the gaps. As Kyle said, there's, there's no way of using this code to stop anything from happening because it's just going to get trampled by the rights majority. It'll, it'll get dismissed by the rights majority exists. This doesn't, this act doesn't open anything up, it doesn't allow any more claims, it's just recognizing the ones which exist. And if, if and when, because I think there is an intent to use one of the Kirt Creek sites for mineral extraction, when that comes through the process, there'll be another public process for opening that, that's my understanding anyway. So this is kind of a, I mean, I mean two minds about it, but it's a, it's very much kind of something we have to do to, to sort of dot i's and cross t's.
Can I add to that?
Yeah.
Dave came forward when asked about, well, exactly where does the public have an opportunity to comment on this, since as it was stated, this is correcting a clerical error. For other districts, do allow for these state and federal mining claims and patents to be recognized, but should this project move forward, we all know that 75 to 90s could continue moving on, there's probably a need for gravel in the future. He pivoted and focused that any questions about permitting be ruled through the DNR permitting process, so that when there's an actionable item about permitting, that that's the time by which DNR would take comments on any potential mitigation or best management practices that would otherwise assess the visual impacts or other impacts from that existing claim being further mined for any other future use along the, along the area. So it was pivoted that this is purely clerical, that any future action or any visual impact would be volved to the actual DNR process, because that's where the actionable item would be.
Questions? Yeah, Brian?
Yeah, actually, one thing you might want to keep in mind about that, which I kind of discovered recently, is that DNR has been particularly unresponsive to public comment regarding that. And my understanding is that at least some of these cases about material site extractions, they're not even required to respond to public comment, but I'm going to account for it. So my comment that I was going to, that was my comment just about that, just keep that in mind, which is very important, especially for Girdwood, because we eventually have some of these out there, which could impact our community and traffic safety to noise in the valley. It doesn't appear that they sort of have to pay attention to anything we say. And, and I know this is just from having commented on some of these sites in the past. So I guess one thing I would actually encourage you guys to actually think about is, I realize it's a letter of non-objection to the Assembly, you know, it's, but you may want, and I think Assemblymen might want to consider this as well, is using this opportunity, you know, I really probably can't stop anything because of creating these claims, but using this as an opportunity to potentially leverage that issue within the state, their lack of sort of responsiveness to residents' concerns in Girdwood about, you know, safety concerns from these material extraction sites, impacts on the seating byway, yeah, noise concerns, yeah, right, for example, just making the other things that are, the turn of our management plan, you know, acknowledging that we've had changes in the community sensitivity. I mean, these sites were actually designated, some of them, decades ago before Girdwood, anything like it does now. So to the extent that you all up there think about this, potentially leverage this as an opportunity to, I don't know, extract a better public process or consideration for a community's concerns from, say, these sites.
These are, I'm sorry, I listened to the whole thing, I haven't asked a stupid question, but these are DOT or DNR?
They're DNR managed sites, but they're within DOT or Alaska Railroad right away. The ultimate responsibility, like the one that's within the Gird Valley, falls back on DOT, it's their, it's their site. But DNR is the overarching permitting agency for these sites.
So, I'm looking at John. So did you understand Brendan's concern? And is there any way...
It's interesting to learn what the parameters are, do they have any attention or... You know, they're not related to mining, so...
Yeah.
But I'll check with Judy, that's good. And this has just been a true do, because I thought it was for action, but we didn't have to, so I'm like, I'm...
So a public hearing will be nice. I think this is worth it.
The public hearing is tomorrow?
The others will be saying, no, it's a...
Okay. Because this seems to be just a clerical, it doesn't matter what we do, I think they're going to do it anyways, Assembly would. But, you know, if there is some leverage, as Brendan suggested, that we can at least get some sort of better communication between the DNR and the DOT, that would be great.
John, for your edification, there are state regulations governing how the division of mining land and water shall respond to public comments, but it depends... of Mining Land and Water shall respond to public comments, but it depends on the type of project. They have those that are considered small projects versus those that are large projects. And a lot of it, sometimes they pass on to the entity that's looking to permit that gravel, and that would be a DOT. So the lack of communication and responsiveness for a public comment for an action that hasn't happened yet from our lovely neighbor DOT is not surprising to me. But that's usually how the buck is passed at the state level, is we're just... We own it, but whoever is taking the action to mine it, it's their responsibility to govern the public process.
Makes sense.
You're welcome.
So any other public comments? Hearing none, I would entertain... Does somebody want to... Mike, do you want to read this, or...
So it's... We don't normally read the letters to the delegate.
Okay. So I would entertain motion to vote on it? Is that what we're...
Yeah, I will.
They're asking us to sign it on this day, right?
Yeah. I'll move that we write a letter of non-objection. I think the right time to... The right time to bring up the issues is probably the public hearing from the Assembly, because there can be more interaction that way.
No, it's the worst time to do anything.
Really?
On Tuesdays? Yeah. No, I'd say any emails or something like that.
No, I mean, in terms of, rather than changing this letter, we can do it. We can change the letter. We don't typically do that, but we can change, because we're... We can change the letter and put in our concerns of our past responsiveness in this letter, or we can do it as part of the record of the Assembly.
We do both, but you know, it's really hard on the Tuesdays to do much. We can do little amendments, but it's going to be... I think it's too complicated in that form, so then we postpone it, we put it off committees and so on, for sessions and all that, do the actual work. Is that what you mean?
Not quite. I mean, through that, through the Assembly process, rather than... I mean, we can modify this letter and just point out that we've found in the past there's been very poor response to public comment for those particular sites. We can do that as well, and then bring up the same issue when it goes through the Assembly. I mean, typically, that's done by comments beforehand, and then action, and response from appropriate parties during the Assembly meeting. So, okay, so in that case, I'm going to propose, I will first of all propose that we send a letter of non-objection.
Okay. And do you want to specify...
Well, if that's seconded, then I will...
Okay.
Seconded.
Right. And then I would now propose an amendment.
Further discussion? Now, we have further discussion?
I propose an amendment. We add a paragraph pointing out that we have concerns over the responsiveness of the DNR, DOT in previous attempts at opening up that mining claim or mineral extraction claim.
Second. Okay, so we have a motion for a non-objection with amendment to the non-objection that's in front of us. Further discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote? All in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment.
To put in appropriate language, yeah.
Yeah. And now, are we going to vote on amendment, the...
We have not. If there are any questions on it?
Okay.
The amended motion. You're chairing this.
Okay. So now, we have just voted on the amendment to the letter of non-objection, and so I'm asking if there's... We've also got on the floor a vote for the letter of non-objection. So any more discussion? Hearing that, let's vote on the letter of non-objection. All in favor with the amendment? I think we did that right. I'm not sure. Next on the agenda.
Sorry, I need to follow up with that. So I'm going to just get your comments, Brendan, and then we'll add this to the letter sent out.
Thanks for doing that. Number eight is liquor license transfer from Judd to Allet Silver to Raleigh. And I don't know if Raleigh, you want to speak to this, but you don't have to do too much other than include it. Do you want to get up and talk, Raleigh?
I don't... I don't have much to add to the actual agenda. It's pretty straightforward, apart from the agenda item. It's the transfer of Judd and Cawthorne to Allet Silver, which is my... My my office, which is real. I do want to thank some of the partners, I'm very grateful, keep the ball rolling, as well as John, who edited Judd for out. And the musical director, I was mainly honest, I was in those areas, she was extremely helpful to me as well, and she was super great to work with. And then the Lanes Committee, you feel? So appreciate it, and that's something that we definitely need, certainly at Silver Tit Bar and Grill. We are looking good. Municipal meeting is tomorrow, and we've got everything that we need there, everything's on the contract, so we should have my work out. We have had a hundred and fifty minutes here in the next few days for our learn not to kind of chicken for the cash, but it's looking good, and so appreciate that this is in front of you here, for sure.
Thanks, Raleigh. So I'd add a motion for a letter of non-objection for Allet Silver liquor license transfer from Judd Cross.
I mean, we write a letter of non-objection for the transfer of the liquor license from Judd to Allet Silver.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? Any further discussion? Anybody have any discussion? Hearing none. Call for a vote? All in favor?
Real quick before we move on, John, who would you recommend we send that to so it gets laid on the table tomorrow night?
We'll send it to, I guess, Manny, but I do the WW Mass, it's all he's sending.
Okay. We'll do that.
And then Manny will...
Okay.
Next on the agenda is the Bear Ordinance Resolution.
Yes.
Mike, do you want to talk to this?
Yeah, sure. So tomorrow, we, the Assembly may or may not get to, because it's the last thing on the list, I'm looking at... John, what's your assessment, John, of whether it will be actually reached a public hearing tomorrow? This is the Secure Trash Ordinance, which I think has been, I think at least one of our local news stations has covered it, and there was an ADN article as well about it.
If it looks like we won't get to it, I'm going to try to do it earlier.
Okay.
And I admit, I think when they set that schedule, they didn't realize that we need to do it now, because we've been talking about it for a year, so I thought that's kind of a slow burn. But, you know, our next meeting's July 9, so we'll be able to do it till the end.
Yeah.
So it's super late, so I expect we'll get it done.
Okay.
Hope to stay till midnight.
Thanks. Well, I'm going to be there.
You'll stay till midnight.
Well, I'll have to. I may bring a sleeping bag, or a hammock, actually, or a break. So what we're asking here is, what I'm asking, is we passed a resolution back in November last year, which asked the Assembly to pass an ordinance to mandate bear-resistant, to have mandatory bear-resistant trash storage, or carts, or dumpsters in Gerwood. And what we have in front of us here is basically the same thing, but just with the language change that matches the ordinance. So what we're now asking for, the ordinance brings in a couple of different terms, and it refers to the mechanism it's using to enforce or to mandate bear-resistant carts is to introduce areas which are called Secure Trash Regulation Zones. So what this says, using very similar language to the last time, it just makes an explicit ask that once this ordinance passes, as soon as possible, I think at the earliest possible opportunity, Gerwood Valley Service Area is designated as a Secure Trash Regulation Zone. Now, I know that's the intent of the Assembly. This has been discussed in many working sessions, but I think it's useful just to have a piece of paper which makes it clear that that's what we're asking for. So if I have to, I will read it. So Resolution Supporting Secure Trash Ordinance AO 2019-74S, and Requesting Municipal Manager Anchorage Assembly Designate Gerwood Valley Service Area as a Secure Trash Regulation Zone. Whereas Gerwood is a small and densely developed community situated at the heart of prime brown and black bear habitat, and whereas the people of Gerwood understand the responsibility to the wildlife whose home we share, and seek to minimize human bear conflict, and whereas Gerwood is a resort community with a large number of second homes, short-term rental properties, and other temporary visitors, and whereas the community of Gerwood has experienced a recurring conflict with bears in our community, sorry, I'll fix the representation, with six bears killed by ADFNG in 2018, and whereas almost 90% of Gerwood's residential customers for curbside waste pickup already choose to use bear-resistant trash carts, and whereas following multiple public meetings during the summer of fall 2018, Gerwood Board of Supervisors passed Resolution 2018-18, requesting the Assembly mandate bear-resistant containers in Gerwood, and whereas the current municipality of Anchorage Code lacks clear and enforceable measures requiring trash to be secured for bears, and whereas the LOA through the Assembly has introduced a Secure Trash Ordinance to require improved trash handling throughout the municipality, including a mechanism for the municipal manager to designate secure trash regulation zones where bear-resistant trash storage is mandatory. Therefore, Gerwood Board of Supervisors support AO 2019-Judd-74S, and request that on the passage of the, that on passage, the municipal manager and the Assembly designate Gerwood Valley Service Area as a Secure Trash Regulation Zone at the earliest possible opportunity. Side note, etc.
Looking for a second?
So if there are any questions, we can speak to what the, you know, the details, I think John and probably Ann Adama, I can speak to the details of what this ordinance will actually do. From our local point of view, it basically means that all trash containers have to be, have to basically be bear-resistant. So if you're using an Alaska Waste Canister, they already provide there a new set of bear-resistant canisters, and I think they gave us a figure of at least 86% of residents here use them already. It's probably gone up a bit since that number. So there isn't going to be a huge change. It just means that the last few people who are not using them will be, basically, have to use them. It also means that commercial use, a lot of the dumpsters around here, they will be required to be bear-resistant. And there's also requirements that people actually use them properly, and if people don't use them properly, ultimately falls onto the manager or owner of the property. And there is a mechanism of fines which can get very steep very quickly. And I think first offense is $150, I think, $100. Second offense, $250. Third offense, $500. That's per day. So, you know, $500 a day adds up fairly quickly.
Actually, that first $100 you can remedy by getting a bear card, so...
So the intent isn't to raise money. The intent is to encourage good trash handling techniques, primarily by having bear-resistant canisters in the first place. The current code is kind of, things are all over the place, and it's almost impossible to enforce it. Cleaning up the code means this is now enforceable, and it does what we want to secure.
Further questions? Any other questions on it from the board, from the public? I've got a resolution, I've got a second. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor? Okay, next up, new business. Add to agenda, LUC 190604, introduction of Alias Nordic Spa Project. Marco.
Can I... I made a disclosure at the beginning, but I have a rule on that. My spouse is an employee of ZIA Architects, so I have at least a technical...
And I don't know that we have to vote on it because there's nothing we're voting on tonight. And that's because it's new business. Is that correct?
It is new business, but it's going to be a discussion topic going forward, so it's just good to get the opinion of the board out of the way on this topic. So you can rule as the chairman if you think to, or otherwise the foreman, but...
I would prefer that the board as a whole vote on conflicts.
I see it not as a conflict, because the group's not required, the applicant's not required to get anything from us, they're just looking for a letter of support to accompany a packet, and this is new business, so no real discussion occurring here tonight. I have no problem with it.
Okay. I would entertain the motion to... How do I want to do this? We want to vote on whether there's a conflict, so...
Well, it would be, it would either be a decision by the chair or a vote that it doesn't rise to be a substantial problem.
At this time, I don't see it as one. That doesn't mean I'm not going to leave it open for next time, it might be a conflict. And we hear it under old business.
Okay.
Then why would we vote today?
Exactly.
Who would vote when we're going to vote this day?
That's what I do.
Makes sense.
Okay. That's what I started. I can make a determination for the meeting tonight. As a chair, I don't think it's a conflict. Okay. Get determination. Marco, you're up.
I'm going to pull this back here a little bit, so you can... Excuse me. My name is Marco Zaccaro. I'm with ZIA Architects. I'm presenting on behalf of the Pomeroy's, Pomeroy Lodging and Alias Resort for our new Nordic Spa. The Nordic Spa will be located, again, this is just the introduction, full details next month, half a month after that, we're sorting through some planning objectives, but the Nordic Spa will be on track day. Track day is occupied by Hotel Alias, that's the boundary between Track Day and Terre Cheneve. The tram terminal in Alias, Hotel Alias, the tram drop off, the Nordic Spa will occupy these two fragments of Track Day. Nordic Spa is essentially an outdoor spa experience with hot and cold plunges, saunas, hot hubs on the water blocks of the woods. There's roughly 18,000 square foot building component with indoor massage and locker rooms, two restaurant components, and a bistro. It's going to be a hot and cold plunges, there's ski rooms. It's meant to be a reward experience for people that ski all day, hike the Winter Creek Trail, come back, and it's not a hampering experience like most normal spas, it's meant to be a reward experience. So you have these board blocks to go through the woods, and barrel saunas, and hot hubs, and sit and relax, and hop and play. They were started in Scandinavia as a kind of a way to get people out of the worst, and they're very popular in Scandinavia and Canada. This will be the first one in the United States, and we're hoping to be opened by Christmas of 2000. So, more details, any other questions? You know, you're laughing.
I got a trails plan potentially coming up, and I'm looking at the most popular trail.
So the Winter Creek, look at this, the Winter Creek Trail is right here, is the yellow line?
Yeah.
And the North Face Trail comes out right here. Part of the general strategy for this development is right now, this end of the hotel site is relatively poorly planned with regards to connections to valley trails. Right now, you have to walk around the tram to get to the Winter Creek Trail or the North Face Trail. What we're proposing, part of this is the accessibility strategy is that we'll bridge over the second level of the tram and car, so that we can utilize the internal elevator to get a hand-to-hand access to our building. This would also solve the North Face access and the winter tunnel down, so that skiing around, taking your skis off, hiking up the stairs, potentially walk across this ridge and it's right at the second level.
So potentially, ski in, ski out from the North Face.
Exactly.
Okay.
Very cool.
And then the other strategy here is people are parking over here, hike the Winter Creek Trail now, they circulate through here, and we kind of make a circular dis绕. This would free people out of the set of stairs here by the front of facilities, and it's a little more of a rest shop. And this also captures people return hiking, because there'll be a bistro restaurant here.
There's going to be food beverage there, too.
So then you do your hike, you can either go in and take advantage of the amenities inside of the Winter Creek Park, or hang out down here.
Okay. Can we talk about parking capacity for day users that would not be otherwise skiing in and skiing out, nor staying at Hotel Alias?
We're doing a parking analysis now. Alan's looking for us. We're doing a parking analysis of the entire area. Right now, this is Track Day. Track Day is where the listed parking is accommodated, and there's an agreement... And there's an agreement through them away and I guess we're starting to allow parking in Track B for uses on Track A. So we're trying to get a full understanding of parking uses, current parking capacity. We've had a couple meetings with the city. Once we understand that and we understand how much parking this will require and how much people stay here already and will be utilizing it for the day usage, then we'll understand how much more parking we would need. And how the city makes us satisfy that extra parking is a point of discussion right now. Right now, there's quite a bit of extra land in Track B that is not covered by parking and that's designated. So if we feel like we need, say, forty more parking spaces than they currently have, there's a number of strategies we could go about getting that parking. We can either encumber the land and see how this plays out and put it in the parking bay and then we'll be able to see that manifests itself that we can do that parking, that we can convert that parking bay into actual parking. So the parking is actually the biggest component of this in discussions.
All right. Further question, and I know we'll get more details on this next month, but I would like to see what we're doing, what you're proposing to mitigate visual aesthetics. There's beautiful old growth forest in there. I'm sure you're remaining a lot of the trees in order to buffer from the bright lights from North Face and from Chair Seven and from the resort. In order to maintain the spa-like feel that you would have in a typical Nordic boardwalk bathing routine with a sauna, but I'm sure you know anticipate what it's going to be like to talk about trees in that area because some of those hemlocks on those north, that north facing roll are gorgeous and old.
Right. So the, this, this part of the parcel here is a more gallery forest.
Yeah.
Behind the cat forest. These are a little bit smaller, a little bit denser along the edge here. This is actually all over right here, the main part of the building will be in the trees a little bit.
So it's much more shallow than I'm anticipating. Okay.
So what you're, the, where the cat turns around, this is actually not a very big site. Where the cat turns around, the clearing is right here, the gallery forest starts here. And then this is fairly dense and we're still playing around with the width of this. Right now, we have it under cat width, so we can groom it in winter tunnel. That may go away, we may make it narrower because we're not sure if we need to get a cat in there. Right now, we're looking at grooming it so that skiers can get the odd of it and get it to the second level.
When the Alberg extension went in, did the water main go out further all the way down to the five K loop? Okay. Just curious because that's going to require additional water.
This is, yeah, I mean, there's, this will be parked in, there will be additional water in there.
Okay. All right. That concludes my questions for now. Thank you for letting me monopolize for a few minutes.
Any other questions from the board?
Where's the CPG trail right now? Like there's no cat trail.
So right now, you can hike up the bank here, so it's really hard to see. This is, this is total line right here at the front of buildings that talk up there. So the CPG turnaround is right here, you can probably see this far right, the edge of the trees is right here and then the cat crack goes off to the corner.
Okay. So do they have a plan to reroute that or something or?
That's a discussion between Brian and Ann, the Pomeroy's.
Okay.
So.
Oh, Marco.
What's that?
I look forward to your court of a year's permit.
What's that?
I look forward, do you have to do a court of a year's permit? Is that what?
No. All of that lands are on these two fragments.
Okay. And you don't have any planned construction staging or anything?
What's that?
No planned construction staging area over there?
No.
Okay.
The intent is to minimize, you know, because that idea behind this Nordic spas is that they're, yeah, we maintain the forests as much as possible. Which is why we call the most of the buildings, could be some pretty tight here, most of the buildings are in places where there's not trees.
Any comments from the public? Questions? Julie?
This will be a two-story, so the top of this building will be about the same height as the top of the tram. So right now, the mounting, the roof on here, here is the same height because the tram is actually about three square meters and this is CPGs are much lower than these are on the story. These are, you know, for this building, it's like a seven hundred square foot and so on. So it's like a small house. Light, it would be thought a little, thought a process. All right, the whole advantage is not to go out there.
Any other questions? Thanks, Marco.
Sure.
And we'll see you again in a meeting in the future. Next on the agenda, discuss agenda topics for MOA GWS tour meeting, which is scheduled for July 29th at Anchorage City Hall. Do we have, Margaret's not there. Do we have anything yet on the agenda, Kyle, that you know of?
No, nothing yet. It's new, new business, so.
We can mention that we are going to be working on the lease contract. Obviously, we can mention that we're going to be working on the contract for the fire department.
I would like to discuss temporary impound yard for special events. Since we discussed it with Tommy and we were in too short of suspense in order to set up a temporary impoundment yard for any parking for future events, I think I'd like to talk about that. And then anything that the Gerwood Fire Department mentioned about the MOA bonding for the breathing apparatus, apparatus tie, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Since they're bonding for it, she was potentially looking at them paying for it, not us.
Which would be part of the contract, I think.
Okay.
And she, I would, she'll usually there if she's around.
Okay. And then?
We'll have her bring that up.
We also, the last time we met with them, we talked about potentially rezoning for the CDC so that we could get parking in there. The Assembly could waive it because they have a record of recognizing the unique instances within Gerwood. Do we need to talk about anything for the CDC? Child development center?
And at this point.
No. Center for the kids. No. I have a department of defense contentment areas, so they were called child development centers. That's how I know.
We can probably hold a little best.
Although I always mess that up and say three bears instead of little bears.
So is that parking issue resolved?
No, I mean, we're working concurrently with, with Mike's working on for this.
We have a change in, we have a change in code anyway for onsite parking. That's what we're going through.
Right. And that will cover little bears?
It will reduce the, it will reduce the parking requirement. It doesn't mean it will be guaranteed to fit in there. There are other specific issues on that side. Yes. I think it will, but there are other specific.
So I would say we, we should have on the agenda little bears just as a general topic for we want to bond and we're working on parking and what we're doing.
I think we have a general discussion about bonding, which covers all aspects.
Because we have cemetery to think about as well, coming up.
Any other municipal?
I'll have more next time.
Yeah, I'll probably think of some too. So we'll have another meeting before that meeting. Okay. Next on the agenda, GTC requests of GBOS resolution to support for KMT grant for signage Beaver Pond, California Creek, Abe's Trail with assistance by Eagle Scout candidate, Micah Wedding King, Wedding King.
Wedding King.
I know his name.
He's right there.
I just can't say it. And Carolyn's going to talk, I guess.
Yeah, hi. Carolyn Brodin again, Chair of Trails Committee. So Kate Sandberg, one of our vice chairs, took upon herself to pursue a project of getting some new signage on our trails and we, she decided to start with Beaver Pond Trail. It's got everything we need for a good start for some new trail signage in Gerwood with a trailhead there at Beaver Pond Trail and then the two offshoot trails of California Creek and Abe's Trail. One reason it'd be nice to get some little more signage is with the new trapping ordinance, one of the things is offshoot trails, as long as they're signed, would be still recognized as a true trail, you know, versus just an offshoot trail that a trapper might think they can just put a trap on or something. So anyway, we are, we formed a subcommittee and we're starting to do all the, gather all the information for a grant. And then when we were just starting to organize, we were approached by local resident, Micah Wedding King, who was looking for a project for his Eagle Scout candidacy. And so now suddenly we have all this great help. Micah's helping with gather information for our grant and then he's going to actually, with the help of his troupe, install the signs after we get the grant. And so this is just an introductory, asking for a resolution of support from the GBOS to include in our grant application. And the grant is due, do you know when it's due, Micah?
It's going to be the first week of August.
First week of August. So we'll be back in July.
We'll be back in July and then we'll vote on a resolution of support for this.
Yep.
And the timing to put the signs in, that would be this year?
I think next year.
When's the project?
Yeah, it'll be next, next spring. Yes. So any more questions?
I would just say that there's strong support for this. When we discussed signage at our meeting in April, there was a good response from emergency responders, being able to, visitors to our community identify what trail they were on, but also since the municipality has done such a great job at their signage so that people can differentiate between Coastal Trail or between Chester Creek or any of the others, it's something that we could follow here. And it also sounds like we've got the support of our neighbor, the Forest Service, to move forward on signage. So everybody wants it and there's really good rationale, reasons for it. There's already like a set standard to go by, so all of the things fall into place.
We're definitely going to have those emergency locator finds. One of Micah's jobs is to talk to Chief Weston and find out.
Are you going to trail walk those distance blocks?
Well, at this point, I think we're only going to have them at, well, at the trailhead, California Creek, Abe's Trail, and then at the intersection of the bike path. We're also going to, of course, fix that sign down there. That's always pointed in the wrong direction. The sign down there. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. See you in July. Thank you for volunteering. MOA land use permit, 2014, thirteen, 2019 renewal, no fee agreement for park and ride to be signed by myself. And in the packet, we have this long contract which we have signed before, correct?
Correct.
It's always, when you look at the contract, it says that we're going to pay the prop tax and stuff like that, but essentially all it is is.
So one change that I will be making is that we won't have the Gerwood Board of Supervisors sign it. It will be the Gerwood Service Area, comma, MOA sign it. Because the Board of Supervisors aren't actually daily managing this facility. It's myself. And so it should be signed in the end by a staff person. But the reason we bring it in front of you is that it is expensive to the service area to manage this park and ride location. It's HLB property. It was traded and it was handed over to the Gerwood Service Area to maintain. And we maintain it, you know? It has the nickname of being the parking dump. We tow cars out of there, we chase cars out of there, we paint the stripes, we clean it, and we plow it. So we're just putting this in front of you to make sure that you want to continue with the funding for this lease and moving forward there.
What if we don't? What if we decide we don't?
Well, it'll probably fall back to HLB. It'll be a very interesting discussion.
I don't want Robin mad at us. Trails can do that.
You know, I think it was, the reason that, this is just sort of a technicality because it is only HLB and through a parking study development or something, we ended up with a park and ride there. I actually don't know the back history on it, but it does help with all the parking counts in town that they have the park and ride there for all these businesses who have all different sort of needs. So is that used as much? But someday in, you know, down the road, that corner of Holmgrom and Gerwood Place will develop at some point. Somebody, there will be an effort at some point in time, those lots will develop probably with business. And then that will become a valuable spot. It does at times, you know, a busy summer day and the laundromat's really busy and thrift woods going and, and the new pharmacy's going, you'll see cars parked in there. You see RVs parked in there and then they go over to the restaurants and things like that. So it does have a purpose, you know? But for me, I might spend more time dealing with the nuisances that happen in that parking lot. But it is what it is. And my, we're not voting on it tonight, but my recommendation probably would be sign the agreement again so that we continue to keep it clean and functioning.
The question I asked last year, and I'll ask it again, is why, why doesn't the HLB, uh, HWA, sorry, why doesn't HLB just transfer it to us and have it as part of the, or street maintenance? Or street maintenance? Yeah, I like the case.
I don't know. I actually would ask that question, but we can't follow up on it. And see, it's a process probably, and this is.
So it's a process doing this every year?
Yes. But by, much quicker and simpler by doing this versus the transfer of land ownership. Because you would have to go through the Heritage Land Bank, the Assembly, and all that.
There's something on the agenda, almost every Assembly meeting, where they're giving up a little piece of land for AWU or adhesion here or adhesion there, the Assembly signs. Be something to ask.
Yep. The other aspect is parcel. So that parcel would have to be subdivided and separated out. So I do not want to take on the rest of the parcel. We have a good relationship there when we have vagrants or anything within the parcel next to the creek. And I'd rather for HLB to keep managing that. It's not something I want to put into the parks, parcels at this point in time. That's just my point of view on that. So it gets complicated, you know? So by renewing a lease each year.
I'm not suggesting we do it before it runs out. I'm suggesting we look at that as a log of a potential solution. Because at the other side, there's, there's complexity now. If something were to happen there, maybe some issue about who has responsibility, then it becomes, we're managing, some other entity owns it, it becomes more complex.
Like it says, hazardous materials and stuff. We're responsible for that.
And there's a very.
And then all of a sudden, there's a lot of duty.
There's a very good thing in there where we're, you know, part of the MOA is saying we're not responsible, it's responsible by the MOA instead.
That's the complexity of the municipality in general, where you have Heritage Land Bank, which is an entity of the MOA, but then apartments within the MOA, you have to, they're leasing from the MOA, you know, and so it's just these layers of.
And then we have the school district as well. That's involved.
Yes. They're just right up the road.
Okay. This is new business, so this will come up again next time. We'll change it to say that the municipality, municipal liaison will sign it, rather my name on there.
Service area manager.
Service area manager. Thank you. Next up, there's two pending items. One is the parking, which we're just going to.
These are no business items. So we just keep them on here until they come back. Margaret does a great job of not forgetting about them.
It's going to be better if they're someplace written down.
At some, at some point, and this is also sometimes for the petitioner, let them know that we're, we know they're out there, we're just waiting for the, like, for example, the dimensional variance on 159 Aspen, we're just waiting for that staff packet to arrive someday and then we send them back on the agenda.
Okay. So that's that. The next thing is the joint meetings. We set a tentative date for the GBOS-GFR joint meeting for October. The LUC joint meeting, any suggestions?
I think the land use talked about looking at August or September again, so we'll pitch it again. If there are still no agenda topics, there's no reason to hold a meeting.
So I guess, Mike, you could bring that up.
Yeah.
For future meetings. Any further business that needs to be done this evening? If not, I would have a motion to.
Motion to adjourn?
Sure.
All right. It's all right.
Wow.
It's summer.
That's nice.
You wrote down life match in our meeting the other day.
Oh, yeah, you gotta do that.
You need to tell me, where, where do I sign this on online?
Sign up for thirty-nine bucks.
Okay. Sounds like a good deal.
Oh, it is a good deal. Now, I don't know who that is.
Must be your team, huh?